Okay, Jerry. You're good now.
Okay. All right, I'd like to call the order of the binding, the binding hearing, which we'll do first. Can I roll call?
Everyone's on mute right now, so you need to unmute yourself when you want to speak.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Bogard?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Sakura? Cal? Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Heller?
Yeah.
We'll suspend the pledge. Okay. You want to read this, Shannon, or?
No, I can't. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct a public hearing for the issuance of thirteen million eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of funding bonds for the purpose of paying claims against the district, and eight hundred thousand dollars of alternative revenue bonds for the purpose of constructing and equipping, equipping a new administration building and improving the site thereof. And I want to clarify that the thirteen million dollar reissuance or issuance is actually the refunding bond, so we're not actually purchasing more bonds. And secondly, the eight hundred thousand dollars of alternate revenue bonds for the purpose of constructing and equipping in the building. I want to remind everyone that alternate revenue bonds do not come from the local tax base. They're not a local, they're not taxes that we collect on property taxes. Alternate revenue bonds come from alternative revenue sources. And in our case, those include the rental at Chauvin Hall that we collect every year, roughly three hundred thousand dollars. And then also money that we collect, a revenue we collect from the city of Morris as part of the TIP surplus agreement that we have with them. So I just want to clarify that alternative revenue bonds are not bonds or revenue that we generate from property taxes.
Thank you. Is my mic stay constantly on, I assume?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Kevin, motion approved to open the binding hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Can I roll call?
I saw him say yes. Does that count?
I didn't hear you, Lisa.
Does the spacebar open the mic?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Stevens?
Did you say, did you say me?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay. Okay, Mrs. Bogard? Okay. And Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
A very enthusiastic yes.
Okay.
Okay, Carrie. All right. What's his next step in here, Shannon, with the, do we have to read each little thing, or what's?
Well, I can go ahead and read that, just to clarify and get it in the hearing. So we notified the public. You, you and I stated the purpose of the bonds is to construct the equipment for the administrative building. We've received comments from the board. You guys have talked about that. And we give it an opportunity for the public to give any written testimony. No one has. And then finally, we've also offered opportunities for any type of oral testimony, and that didn't happen either. So at this point, we can conclude the binding hearing.
Could I have motion to adjourn and close the binding hearing?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bogard? Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Very good.
It's okay, Amanda, it's fine.
Okay, I'd like to call the order of the regular board meeting. Could I have roll call for that?
Okay, Mr. Hitchcock?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Bogard?
Here.
Mr. Sakura? Ms. Cal? Mr. White?
Here.
Ms. Heller?
Here.
I got her.
I want to say a couple of things as we move into the approval of the agenda. I got, I got ahead of there, I'm sorry.
What's that?
I got ahead of you a minute on the approval of the agenda, I have a few things I'd like to tell you.
That's fine, I was just, I was just getting ready to say, since we're not together in a, in the public building, and the flag present will suspend the pledge of allegiance, and then go ahead, approval of the agenda, go ahead, Shannon.
I'm sorry, Jerry.
Don't worry.
A few items, I want to make sure that everyone is aware that the Empress Fund, we don't have any checks written for April. The American Express account has some credits due to conferences and various other returns, but we're still waiting to get that back. April and May items will be included in the, in the June board packet. Also, the PTO minutes and financials, PTO didn't meet in April due to COVID, so I want to be upfront with that. We also have Craig Meadows on the phone call with us today, the Zoom meeting. And he's going to speak here in a few minutes when we get the, the action items and reference to the bids. So I just want you to know why Craig is here. And then otherwise, I believe that's everything I have, so turn it back to me, Jerry.
Thank you. So under public recognition, do we have anything? No poor participation except us, maybe Craig. And presentation from the audience, which is us. So let's move on to consent agenda. Can I motion approve the consent agenda items?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Can I have roll call?
Mrs. Bogard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, Pat.
Good evening, everyone.
Under committee reports, do we have anything for the month?
The only thing we have to report on is the policy or is the policy committee, and Jim, do you want to read those, or?
Okay. Then we pull that up here. We met on Wednesday, April twenty ninth, we'll start at 1:00 PM. Ms. Beeler, Raffel, myself and Dr. Dudik were there. We reviewed press, policy press one oh three. The committee viewed the information and from ISBE regarding this press policy issues. And we discussed some of the policies in further detail and answered the questions associated, associated with them from press. It was nothing compared to the press pack from one oh two. There was just a lot of clarifications, five-year reviews and changes and footnotes. We also, since we had a contract update, a CBA policy update, newly approved collective bargaining agreement between the Board of Education and Morris Elementary Education Association, was sent into ISBE for the press members to review. Recently, they had sent the district the revisions needed to the policy manual with the updates to reflect the changes to the contract. The CBA updates do need to go to the board for approval, but this approval can be done, and we already done did it. Okay, in the consent agenda. It could be done in one reading, and that's, that's all we have.
Okay. That's all for committee reports? Okay. And then we go and move to action items, do we want to, since we have our two architects here, do we want to speak on this before we go into the approval process, or?
Well, I think we're going to, we can go ahead and, if you want to start, I already have a piece inside of the agenda where they can, they can talk about it if you.
Go ahead and move through?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. So approval bids for the completion of administration building?
So on May twelfth, the district argued, I tell bid openings for the administrative building project. We had many bids for the trade packages, and Pat Callahan and Craig Meadows are here. They were there to present the winning bids and answer any questions today related to the building. And at this point, I'm just, I'm going to recommend the bids to you here in a few minutes. But I want to give Pat and Craig an opportunity to go ahead and speak on the bid process, and ultimately, any questions you might have with the process or the bids that we've, we have.
So, thank you all. Actually, we're very, very happy that we received as many bids as we did, given the current state of affairs. I think the other thing that we're very, very happy about was not only bid coverage, but the target amount. We recognize that it's still slightly over our target budget, but it's within spitting distance. And I think that goes to the fact that we had a lot of competitive bid trade packages, we actually had three or four trade packages. And the trade packages were broken down based on the most, breaking them down to get the most value. So general trades package, we had HVAC, we had plumbing. And so I think it's important to know that we, the, what the board is doing tonight is recommending the award of the contract. Once, one minor clarification is since Narvik is both construction manager as well as low bidder on trade package number one. We just want the board to authorize the award of the contract to Narvik, or that their contract could be awarded to Narvik. And it will fall under the current contract that the, that the district has with the school district. All the other trade contracts will be contracted directly with Narvik with the board's authorization. We're very happy that the, that the numbers themselves came in the targeted budgets. And, and lastly, and Craig, you can, you can fill any blanks that I'm missing here. We're also very happy that we got a lot of local participation, which I think is really, really great.
Yeah, all of the bidders that were recommended tonight were the ones that had been participating in the budget review process. Drawings early on to make sure that we were keeping in alignment with the budget. So really, what's coming out of this is there are a few oddities kind of in the process that got discovered and drove the numbers up a little bit. So we've already started talking in Narvik about that, but it's important to award or to recommend for award or authorize so that we can package that up in a tidy little package and then proceed on getting the first change order to get it back down to the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget number.
I have to finally say that it's the first bid opening I've ever done sitting outside in front of a school.
It was awesome.
Very nice. So does anyone have any questions for our architects while they're here? The total bid package collectively is six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars roughly. But like they were talking about, once we can put it all together and get it approved, then we can go back to negotiate and try to get to below, we will get it below the six hundred and fifty thousand dollar threshold that you've agreed to earlier.
So we're still thinking this will be done by August, or it might not be important, but.
Well, September first is kind of our target now, because we have been pushed back a little bit. But the trades, and I, and you know, Pat and Craig can speak on this, the trades are ready to go, and they, they would like to start working on Wednesday. So they're, they're definitely up for this job.
Yeah. Barring any more monsoons, you know, on weather-related issues, you know, I think, I think we shouldn't have any issues in expediting this to get it done.
Okay, yeah, what is, so they were ready to go promptly, pretty quick here, it sounds like. Great, okay, wow, excellent.
And they got that pipe rerouted, or whatever it was, the water.
Right, whatever work is done.
Yeah, and I want to, I want to clarify that, too. I mean, we had to do some work on the front end before we could even do this, and that was both for the existing building and then also the admin building. So there's some work that I'm going to bring to you in June. And I do have some of the, the bills that have been collected. It was too late to put the bills on this board meeting, but we will put the bills on the next board meeting. Originally, the project was supposed to be, the, the moving of the, of the, of the, of the water line was supposed to be under ten thousand dollars. It ended up being a little bit more, well, quite a bit more. So they had, they ran into some other problems while they were doing that. So the, the bill is a little bit more than that, I think it's roughly forty thousand dollars. So we're going to have to look at that, but again, we had to do it in order for the building anyway, and especially putting our administrative building, it had to be moved, which in turn affected the sewer line, had to be moved, and there were some other challenges.
Okay. So we. Yeah. I do not. Want to go, go forward with the motion on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Got motion to approve the Morris School District fifty-four award of trade package number one, General Trades and Narvik Brothers Incorporated, in a total base bid amount of five hundred and twelve thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bogard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay. Second action item is move, motion to approve the Morris School District fifty-four authorizing the award of trade package number two, Mechanical, to Yendor, Jean May Heating and Cooling, in a total base bid amount of sixty-one thousand nine hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Bogard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, the third action item is motion to approve the Morris School District fifty-four to authorize the award of trade package number three, Plumbing, to Countrywide Plumbing, in a total base bid of twenty-five thousand four hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, can I have a roll call?
Mrs. Bogard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mrs. Heller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, trade package four, motion to approve the Morris School District fifty-four authorize the award of trade package number four, Electrical, to Ayers Electric, in a total base bid amount of eighty-five thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bogard?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
And Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Very good.
Thank you, Pat.
Yeah, our pleasure, and we'll be providing you with monthly updates, written updates, and if you want us to come down and say hello, we're happy to come to a board meeting as well.
Okay, thank you very much for stepping in.
Yeah, good night, good to see you, too.
Thanks.
Oh, good deal. Good to see that we're using all local. Oh, that's good to have them in the local people in the process here. Okay, moving on, certified and non-certified salary increase?
Okay, this increases for the employees in our district that haven't received school board action for a four and a half percent salary increase for FY twenty-one. These employees include, initially, I was going to be included in this, but superintendent is being taken out. So this only includes custodians, food service personnel, and support staff. I recommend the school board take action on a four and a half percent increase for all these non-contractual employees. And Jerry and I were just talking about my evaluation, and that's going to come out here in the next few days. And then we can discuss me in June, whenever we get together for, hopefully, we can be together for our June board meeting and have a closed session then. And we'll have all the evaluations back, so I am not included in this action item.
Got motion to approve the four and a half salary increase for all personnel not under contract.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I'll just add into the discussion that along with Shannon, since he's, you know, technically always on his own, that we're going to do his evaluation. So I'll be getting that to you soon, so we can kind of do this all next month. It's usually a yearly thing, and, and obviously, this, this board got on a year ago, so you had a whole year with the superintendent. And so, you know, it's kind of a good time of year to do it. So we'll kind of take care of that business in June, as long as we're able to meet and, you know, take care of that. So anyway, roll call, vote, please. I'm sorry, anybody else have discussion?
Um, I just, I'm curious roughly about how many people are in this list? So custodians, food service, and support staff. I mean, I don't need anything super accurate, but.
Well, I would, I would say all people in the cafeteria, so we would say maybe like five or six. I would say custodians, I don't know that number. Maybe roughly twenty, I, or maybe a little less. And then also our, our support staff, central office staff, everyone from secretaries to assistants to Jill Mills. I don't know, what do you think, maybe another ten people?
Yeah, I would say probably another ten, and then the, the biggest group probably is like parapros.
Right, and I would say the parapro, sorry, is probably between twenty-five to thirty.
So we're probably approaching fifty people, I would say fifty to sixty people, sir.
Okay.
And I think the only people that are left would include me, Greg Mann, and Melissa Terry. And I'll, I'll talk, all three of us will be discussed in closed session in, in June.
And I, that's probably important to clarify, the four and a half follows the teacher's salary, their contract, so it's kind of going up that, that's where the number came from, so it's probably important to mention that here.
Exactly right.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, roll call.
Mrs. Bogard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Okay, employment.
So I recommend the following individuals for employment for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year at Morris fifty-four. And they include Kaylee Smith, eighth-grade ELA teacher, Kathleen McDermott, seventh-grade ELA teacher, Gabrielle Stone, ELL teacher. Also, our summer custodians and maintenance crew, and they include Anne Marie Hayes, Helene Frame, Kathy Mata, Liliana Ortega, Tanner Berg, Taylor Cole, Justin Zink, Gavin Ross, and Polly Stevens. And I also sent to you today the salaries for the custodial people. So you have all the information on salaries for all of the recommended employees for tonight.
All right. Got motion to approve the employment recommendations for Morris Elementary School District fifty-four.
So moved.
Second.
And I have a roll call.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
abstain, and I want to make sure you're, I don't want like, Kalia Smith and Kathleen McDermott, I don't want any of them to think I'm like, you know, being weird, but it's because my daughter's on that list.
Yep. We'll communicate that if that's, if there's a question with that.
Mrs. Bogard?
Yes.
All right. Okay, is that it? All right, FY twenty-one lunch price?
The Illinois School Board of Education recommends school districts charge, Austin recommend charge increase of ten cents for all student lunches. Currently, our students pay three dollars per lunch and a dollar sixty-five per breakfast, and the increase is due to a calculation required by ISBE to receive reimbursement. Also, adult lunches are also recommended for an increase to three dollars and sixty cents per adult lunch and two dollars per adult breakfast.
Got motion to approve the FY twenty-one lunch price increase, three thousand and ten cents lunch, a dollar sixty-five breakfast, three dollars and sixty cent on lunch, and two dollar adult breakfast.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Ms. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Bogard?
Yeah.
Okay, band music renovation project?
We've talked about this for quite a few weeks and even months now. I'd like to remove the walls of the former business manager and superintendent offices in order to make it a much larger and appropriate-sized band room. The quote includes wall demolition, electrical work in the wall demolition, fire alarm demolition in the walls, and rework of the ceiling, electrical and fire system reconfiguration. The quota's for fifteen thousand six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, and this cost will include all work to be appropriate for students and the building.
Got motion to approve the band music renovation project quote from Narvik Brothers for fifteen thousand six thirty-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Heller?
Yeah.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Bogard?
Yeah.
Mr. White?
Yeah, yes. Communication, superintendent's report, Dr. Dudik?
Okay, I'm going to read through, we have quite a few academic, or I should say dates and times that I'd like to go through with you. I'm not going to read my entire report, I just want you to know that the dates are included. Last day of remote learning for eighth graders was May fifteenth. There, today, we had a teacher planning day, and also, we distributed quite a few eighth-grade signs and, and robes and things like that for graduates. We are going to have, the last day for remote learning for students is May twenty-first, no, I'm sorry, May twenty-second. And we are going to do locker cleanout and return school supplies starting tomorrow. Students will be able to come and get their belongings from their lockers and cubbies beginning tomorrow. In addition to getting their belongings, students should return school materials at this time. Items to possibly return include textbooks, library books, PE locks. Students returning to Morris Grade School in the fall may keep their Chromebooks over the summer. And suggested summer activities will be sent out periodically over the summer for students and certain, and families to voluntarily keep practicing certain academic skills. Morris Grade School has set up the following schedule for students. And again, we broke it down based on last names, because we want to limit the amount of people inside of our building. Also, we have discussed social distancing and also masks when they're in the building. They're going to, our dates are going to be tomorrow, Wednesday, and then also on Thursday from four to seven in the evening, so we can try to get everyone in that needs to get in. For eighth graders, we wanted to do our best to honor them in the most deserving way. And while following guidelines and parameters placed on us in the current situation, both by the state and the local health departments, we would like to have graduation July thirtieth at Gould Park, and we've talked about this quite a few times. Our focus is to still provide an in-person graduation, a real, I should say, live graduation. And we want to do that on Jane, on July thirtieth, at, at seven o'clock at Gould Park. And our idea is it's going to be a little cooler, we're going to be able to spread out. We believe that the health department in Grandy County is going to be supportive of this measure. We just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can as we approach the summer and, and July, that we do everything that's within the best practice guidelines that we have. We want to make sure everyone is safe, and that's the priority. But we also want to honor our graduates, too. So we'll continue to provide more information on that as we get, as we move along. But we anticipate at this point that we'll be able to do something outside together on July thirtieth. I also want to tell you that Jackie Stoltz was awarded the Rotary, Morris Rotary Teacher of the Year, and she was honored by her colleagues via Zoom meeting. Mr. Raffel coordinated, her husband Andy, who's stationed in Iraq, to be on the Zoom meeting. Miss Stoltz was extremely surprised to receive the award. I'm honored to be able to recognize and honor Mrs. Stoltz for her commitment and hard work as she masters her craft for our students. Also, I want to remind everyone that our June board meeting will be held on June fifteenth. Also, on June fifteenth, an amended budget hearing must take place for the amended school district budget. The amended, amended budget hearing will take place immediately before the regular June school board meeting. And it's been on display, and we haven't had anyone discuss the budget with us. I also want to let you know that I would like to have an in-person school board meeting in June, and we can have it back in the cafeteria. And that's my hope unless something changes, but with being in phase three of the reopening, we can do that. So that would be my hope that we could get together in June. And that's all I have.
Administrative team report?
All right, I'm going to read it, we just kind of combined it just because we're all together, and there hasn't been the normal end of the school year things. Staff continues to do an excellent job with remote learning. There have been a lot of fun activities provided to our students and their families. Virtual teaching sessions and meetings continue to take place, and the excitement with students and staff is contagious, and having gotten to sit in.
And having gotten to sit in on some of those, it has been very exciting to see the kids and how excited they are to see each other during these Zoom meetings. As Dr. Duk said, our end of the year plan has been created and shared with our families. I want to thank the numerous staff who've reached out and are eager to help with these end of the year tasks. We will give you an update on the graduation ceremony, as he said, as we get closer to the date. I'm attending weekly Zoom meetings with principals from around the state to discuss ideas for the upcoming year. Obviously, we still don't know what the beginning of the year will look like, but it has been nice to be a part of these discussions and brainstorming sessions. And some ideas regardless of the requirements that we get from ISBE will be helpful. I attended a two-day remote learning virtual conference on Friday, May 15th and Saturday, May 16th. There were many breakout sessions on remote learning and increasing the effectiveness of educating students in these settings. And I'll be sharing that with my admin team and instructional coaches later this week. I'd like to take a moment to thank Kevin Schramm and WCSJ 103.1, the voice of Grundy County, for their partnership in the Morris Teacher Spotlight that takes place each weekday from 9:35 until 10:00 AM. I also want to give a shout out to the teachers who volunteered to be readers and represent our school during these sessions. Joe Larson, fifth grade, Lauren Blotty, sixth grade, Bridget Burke, kindergarten, Kaisley Siren, pre-K, and Mandy Medler will end it on this Friday, and she teaches fourth grade. All IESA athletics have been suspended until further notice pending guidance from the IDPH and ISBE. And I met with the third grade team last week, and we discussed a new plan to transition our students into the enriched math program. Students will begin the year with their homeroom teacher for math. Then after the teachers get to know the kids as math students, and we have the fall NWEA map data, we will transition them into enriched classes as was done previously. These kids will work on fourth grade concepts in the second half of the school year. And then the summer class will be done between third and fourth grade instead of between second and third grade to help them get ready and be ready. So that way, when they start fourth grade, they would actually be doing fully fifth grade math as is our normal track. I believe this is a much better way to enrich students than rushing through the whole third grade math curriculum in a three-week period between second and third grade. I will work with the third grade team throughout the year to implement this trial and report back to you next spring. And like I said, I truly believe that this plan is actually going to be beneficial for our kids in the long run and could be a long-term plan than our current plan in place. And just the situation we're in has kind of allowed us to try something new rather than trying, since we can't do it in person now. And that is everything I have for the district administration report.
Hey. And did we have any board communication come through?
No.
Okay. That is it, then, as we have left is a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second. All those in favor? I opposed. That's it.
Thank you, everyone.